Let's go ahead and call the city council meeting of May 20th to order. Please stand for the invocation, Mr. Ellis.
Gracious God, in the name of Jesus Christ, we come to you, asking for your grace and mercy upon the families that are suffering from the horrible explosion. Lord, we ask that you have mercy upon the lady that's in the hospital and any others that suffered injuries. And we ask, Lord, that you take the gentleman that lost his life into your kingdom. We ask that you bless and keep all those that suffered harm to both homes. And, Lord, we ask that you bless our city. Or we need you to bless our first responders, our police, and fire, and all that was involved in being there. Lord, we ask that you give us strength, that you keep us. Please, Lord, bless this council. Give it the strength to do your will, not our will, but your will. Bless us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilperson White.
Present.
Councilperson Payne. Present. Councilperson Gill. Here. Councilperson Hawkins.
Here.
Council President Zostabny.
Here.
Councilperson Owen.
Here.
Councilperson Ellis.
Here.
Councilperson Daniel.
Here.
On the record, reflect, eight council members present.
All right, we have minutes to approve for April 15th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second to approve minutes. Any changes or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We also have special meeting minutes for April 15th.
Are those in the packet?
None of those are in the packet. Did we do that last time?
Yeah, we did that last time, right? The 22nd also we didn't do, right? Let me take those off.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so next up is the approval of the agenda, number six.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with tabling number 10 and unfinished business due to the advertisement not being advertised in time.
Second.
A motion second to approve with tabling number 10. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Claims to be approved, civil claims of $580,786.
Turn away. Yes, civil city claims for $580,766 and 10 cents. And there was one change of claim from page two. It was a reimbursement for $31.29. Probably two, three inches up from the bottom. That was, needs to be moved to the thunder budget, which is on page 10. But other than that, the totals are the same.
So we're all things in order? Do we get the event schedules and all the other stuff?
Yes.
Nobody has any? Went through the claims, everything's in order then? So I'll make a motion to approve the claims of $580,766 and 10 cents.
Second.
A motion second to approve the claims for civil claims. Any other concerns or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right, next up, parks claims for $458,339.
37 cents.
And 37 cents.
You steal my thunder when you say them numbers.
I'm sorry.
It's the only thing I get to say.
All right, next up, parks claims.
That's true. You're on the agenda plenty tonight.
Don't you get up there long enough?
You know, if the, there was a contract for William Morrison, Dever, for $72,000, was that signed?
Yes, I did get that one.
And all of the claims were in order then?
Yes.
And I have the contract. They brought it down to me. Good, thank you.
Is that for one, is that for one show or multiple shows? Do you know?
I don't know the answer. One show?
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the parks claims of $458,339 and 37 cents.
Second.
A motion second to approve the parks claims. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Reporter, clerk?
Yes, I have just one thing. The ordinances from last month, our last meeting, 2018 OR 67, the animals, 2019 OR 15 and 16, which were additionals, and 2019 OR 16, which was a rezoning, I have not received back from the administration, so. Does that do the vacation?
So I get the double correction button? All right, thank you much. First up, number nine, Ms. Metcalf, you're back up. An ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department. Passed on first and second reading.
No changes.
And I'll make a motion to pass 2019 OR 18, the third and final.
Second.
A motion and a second to pass 2019 OR 18, the third and final reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
And number 10 is tabled to go to new business, number 11. Brad Benson, a public hearing, petition to vacate certain plat of easement.
Good evening, Brad Benson with Applicable Fire Empowerance here in Jeffersonville, 428 Megs Avenue, here on behalf of Jeffersonville Commons LLC and Broadway LLC. What there is, is a, it's an old plat back from, I believe it was 61, that included some five-foot easement, was on the south and north side of the plat itself. As you all know, Jeffersonville Commons is in the process of developing. They've since went back and done a plat of that, a replat of it. And when that was done, they noticed that there was these easements that were still there. I've got Harold Hart here with me if there's any questions that I can't answer. But what it is, is the easements themselves are not used. He's checked online, confirmed. There's been other located easements, that, new easements through the process of developing. So there's no issue as to changes hindering, actually, in fact, this will help the growth of the area because it will allow them to continue developing it. I have not received any other, any phone calls except for one. I received a phone call from Mary Peters', I believe it was daughter, just asking a little bit of information. She didn't object to it by any means. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to affect her mom by, and, you know, as you all can see from the petition, it does not, it will not affect it at all. So is there any questions for me or Mr. Hart?
So you all know too, they provided me with every letter of the residents in the area and the certifications where they prescribed.
Let me go ahead and do the public hearing and get that out of the way.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against regarding this, this easement? Anyone here to speak regarding this, this issue? Seeing no one, go ahead and close public comment. Mr. Merkley, is there any concerns with the administration or with the vacay? With that?
Where's ordinance number?
I just said, your title is incorrect on this document. I don't know. You changed it.
Would it be ordinance number 20? Okay. I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 20. I guess it'd be 2019 OR 20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass 2019 OR 20. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next up, Assistant Chief McQuaid, talk about federal port security grant.
Good evening. Good evening. Per the ordinance and requirements, the police department, when it applies for the federal port security grant program, we have to come into council and make notification and officially request the permission to be able to do that. This year for the port security grant program, we are requesting to put in for a new boat. The current boat we have is going on 12 years old. The new model boat will give us more capabilities on the water. Obviously, with the events and things that have occurred within the last so many, so many years, it seems like every year the events get more, the population on the water's more. And then I just read something in newspaper the other day, I think Louisville's having jet skis available for rental on their waterfront, so. Our capabilities, while they're sufficient currently, I think the age of the current boat, coupled with the increased activity, is going to lead us to look towards the future of purchasing a new boat. So hopefully, we can land this, the port security grant, and it does require a 25% match. The grant won't be awarded until 2020, so we were going to use those funds next year out of our Lloyd budget, 25% match. I believe the total cost is in there along with all the specs. I don't expect some of the specs to change. There might be some minor changes to it. But I believe the portion that we would be responsible for matchwise is $75,000. Yeah, that's correct. So, excuse me.
So would you say this would be pretty much, I don't know the lingo and all the different, but pretty much equipped as you needed, or would you be needing?
Yes, yes. I mean, if there was changes, it would be to paint schemes or minor, minor changes. But the boat itself will have more capabilities, hold more manpower, more responders.
I was just going to ask you that because I knew when we went out for our trip, there you'd only get so many when you had the classes.
Right.
You took us out. Couldn't get very many on there.
What's the life of a boat like this?
Ours is, ours is pretty active. We run ours basically March through November, or until the weather starts to get colder and the water, you know, the river goes up. And we run ours a lot, Thursday through Sunday, or in the event that there's some other issue on the river, it could possibly be out there longer. So I don't know what the life, I'm not a pleasure boater, so I wouldn't be able to tell you what I've seen with some boats.
But it does get quite happy years.
Last 20, 15, 20 years. But as much use as ours gets, I would say that we're probably in a wheelhouse of looking to, I know we've already replaced a couple sets of motors, we did that through a grant too as well. So I expect, I've always been told boats are civs sometimes when it comes to repair and maintenance, but we've been fortunate.
What would you do with the current one then?
We'll keep that as well and try to get as max life out of that as humanly possible.
Is it application for something comparable?
I don't understand.
The replacement, are we, are we replacing with the same type of?
No, it's a different, it's a, it's a different type of boat. This, this boat has more capability to hold people in the front and the back. The cab is a little bit smaller than the current cabin that we have, which allows for more manpower, more equipment space. It's a, it's a metal shark, which, I mean, if you want to get into the specifics of the boating versus fiberglass and, this is comparable to what the Coast Guard utilizes. I'm sure Captain Marlin, he's our River Patrol Commander, he could probably give you more specific detail on, on the exact makeup of the boat.
You need a motion?
You just need a motion to go ahead?
To apply for the grant, yes. I mean, there's no guarantees that we would even get it, so.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second to go ahead and allow for the grant to continue, to move forward.
And I'll keep you all updated as far as its progress if we do get awarded any monies.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Next up, Mr. White, resolution approving urban enterprise zone tax credit for development located within a tax-incommissioned finance district.
Thank you. This is the project located at Spring and Market. Currently, the Urban Enterprise Association owns the parking lot there. This project will be by ARC. It has gone through all of the approvals. We're looking to close by the end of the month. No, I'm sorry, this is May. No later than the end of June. And this is the last step. If I understand correctly, we have to do this because it's located in the Tiff district?
Yes.
Yes. Currently, the property is non-revenue generating for the city or the UEZ. And Mr. Sambs is here on behalf of ARC, if you have any questions about the project. You want to come up, Jason?
Yeah. Jason Sambs, ERC, 1517 Fabicon Boulevard, Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47130. We've been through plan commission, VZA, and the historic board recently. This is kind of our, one of our last steps in our development agreement with the Urban Enterprise Association to execute our development in downtown Jeffersonville along with our current investment in downtown Jeffersonville and continue our growth and investment in the city of Jeffersonville as stewards of our community.
This is a 3.4, 3.5 million dollar investment.
About 3.4, 3.5 million dollars. It consists of 22 apartments and about 9,000 square foot of retail. It's a mixed-use project. Sits there on the corner of Spring and Market.
Three new, three new businesses?
Three new businesses. We've been talking to a bank, coffee shop, and a bistro-style restaurant.
And that's a local restaurant?
Local restaurant, yes.
Local as in regional?
Local, regional, yes. So we're excited about moving our project forward. This is one of our last and final steps to complete the development agreement and execute our plan and asking for approval from you all tonight on ordinance.
Thank you. There's somebody to sign up to speak on this topic, so as discussed, may I let that person speak, public comment? Deborah Henderson, you have three minutes to, to speak. Your name and address and all that, please.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Rakey Henderson. My address is 222 Megs Avenue. Yes, I've been following this project and been at all the meetings that, that have been discussed this evening. The path taken to the council for the resolution now for a vote, a vote that I would request to be a no, has included protests from residents and board members along the way, unanswered questions, concerns about quality, design, use, parking at every single step until it reached here tonight. Downtown Jeffersonville, it's charming, historic, innovative, and exciting. The proposed three-story structure for the corner of Spring Market is none of those things, nor, as it's been called, is it modern. One proponent noted on social media, he liked it, and driving around the area had seen similar buildings near UofL and other areas of Louisville. They're also seen in Clarksville. They're also seen in Jeffersonville. This is a commercial design that is being widely duplicated because it's cheap to build. It's not, however, cheap to maintain, and if it's not done properly, it soon becomes an eyesore. Who's going to live here is another question, above the bank, the coffee shop, and the restaurant. The supposition is that there are 22 millennials who are willing and able to pay $850 and up for approximately a 600-foot square apartment. They're also willing and able to forego an elevator, as due to the cost, there's not going to be one in the building. The parking question, for residents, staff, shoppers often met with a reference to a study done in 2014 presented to the city in 2015. Reportedly showed a surplus of or underutilization of downtown parking in 2014. However, that study also described a parking shortage in the near future, one which had the mayor considering the need for parking garages. A block of concern, the block between Market and Chestnut, Spring and Wall. The downtown area of Jeffersonville is now one of the largest marketing tools that the city owns. What's done, what's built, does affect you and your district. The property in question currently being utilized for economic gain. On a recent Saturday evening with no special events, over 60 cars were parked by people dining, shopping, spending money in downtown Jeffersonville. Therefore, we have the opportunity to look at the long game and determine if Spring Street is even able to support multi-housing dwelling. We can also wait for a developmental project that properly reflects our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would that open up the council for questions, concerns, or whatever?
This parking lot has been empty for over 50 years. It's going to be an asset to downtown. I've received overwhelmingly positive feedback going door to door.
I have a question. If, it's in, currently in a Tiff district, and redevelopment generally does redevelopment projects and commercial development, why are we moving it from redevelopment to UEZ? I mean, I know UEZ does the same thing as well, but why is there?
It's similar to what we did with the hotel on the corner of Mulberry and Maple. The UEZ owns this, the UEZ, when the UEZ gives the credit, then the 50% of the assessed property tax that they would pay is paid into the UEZ as a donation. And that's what we do to pump money back into the community to do different projects. So in order for us to give up an asset, we're then reaping the benefit of that, which we can give back to different projects like facade enhancement for businesses, we give direct grants to businesses for sometimes internal work, we do scholarships to zone, children of zone, or kids who live in the zone, and, you know, different projects like that.
Was it sold by UEZ?
Uh, yes, for $1.
I think that it's also worth noting, this was not the first developer to, to look at or, or be approached, or approach the UEZ about doing something on that corner. There've been several different proposals and several different ideas that either didn't work out or couldn't, couldn't make work because of the numbers. It's not been a short process of getting here.
Right. And we have been in constant communication with the mayor's office regarding the UEZ tax credit as opposed to money going into Tiff district as well, so everybody's on board.
What's the anticipated timeline for the project if it moves forward today?
If it moves forward today, we would start probably August, September-ish. You're looking at an 11 to 12 months construction project, roughly, give or take a few. We've got substantial subsurface remediation that we have to do to correct the dirt underneath the parking lot, and it's going to take some time.
Yeah, so apparently, when previous buildings have been torn down, the rubble was just buried underneath the surface, so it's around approximately $200,000 worth of work that needs to be done, that ARC will do. UEZ is also giving them $40,000 towards that remediation because it's our asset. So you could say they're paying $160,000 for the property because in order to build on it, they have to clean it up.
Parking spaces, I know you have to have for the residents there, but what about for the businesses?
We have 34 total parking spaces in the rest of the site, plus there's 311 along the street that's in there. So that's what's out there, or that's what's planned today.
Remind me how many units there will be?
22 units. And they're, majority of them are one bedrooms, 16 one bedrooms, and the rest two bedrooms.
Well, it seems like this may be just for prosperity's sake. I, I will not be voting for this, though it pains me because I think ARC does nothing but good work, and I'm held alunacy for, we lived in the same neighborhood as children together. But I will not do this because I'm not for giving an entity a large sum of money over the next many years that is not subject to open door law, is not subject to the DLGF, is not subject to the SBA. And I've been told on more than one occasion, and people at that podium have been told on more than one occasion, that they don't have to tell how they spend their money or what they do with it. And I do not feel that is a, whereas redevelopment, we have open meetings, you can ask us for anything, you can attend if you see fit. So I don't have, I didn't even really, when I heard what this was about, I really didn't even look at the project. It's not a matter of the project. I just, I'm going to vote no, and of course, it looks like I may in fact be on the losing end, which is something I'm used to. But that is the reasoning for my vote when you hear me say it.
Thank you.
I'll be voting no. Some for the same reasons, but also I feel that redevelopment has put an awful lot of money investment in downtown, and I think that's been a huge benefit to anyone coming in, looking at any kind of property in the downtown area.
I would just point out that redevelopment has put in quite a bit of, a substantial amount of investment in downtown. We have one apartment development going up, we've got the Spring and, 10th and Spring project, Phase 1 finally under development. The only completed project we have is a UEZ project that was completed under the same terms, same types of terms. The UEZ is controlled by a 15, is a 15-member board that is appointed either by this council or by the mayor's office. They hold public meetings. I think there's a state appointment also.
Yes, the state representative's appointed by the governor.
I don't want to, I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, ask, ask for our no votes to reconsider so that we can see another project get off the ground downtown. I would hate to see a gravel lot continue to sit on prime real estate. Because nobody's going to pay $200,000 to clean that site up and then purchase the property on top of that. And it's not owned by the city, it's not owned by redevelopment. And this is how, this is the only way this is going to get done. And there, for three years, we've met with different developers out of Louisville and outside the region, trying to get this done. And it's going to remain an empty lot if, if this doesn't happen.
Does redevelopment have any objections from the mayor's office?
What's that?
I was hoping, I just got back today, and redevelopment's not a position, I know, I do know, but I think redevelopment, around ways, has some concerns about $10.
One of the things that I'd heard was a concern about granting, granting this whatever the UEZ is doing in a Tiff district. And I am concerned when we give somebody something for a dollar and then turn around and, and pay them to clean up the property. If a business is truly concerned about developing this, I, I would think that they would, knowing that there is some junk and stuff under the pavement, that they would consider that when they decided to buy that without asking the city to finance this for, or go here and do this and then give me that property.
The city is not giving them any money for this.
UEZ is, right?
Yes.
Right, so the, the city's not putting any investment into this property?
No dollars.
The UEZ does not pay any property tax to the city currently?
Correct. Pays nothing into the Tiff.
So it considers an empty lot that continues to produce no economic outcome, or output?
Correct.
Which we're not generating Tiff dollars from.
Who owns it? UEZ owns it.
UEZ owns it.
Can the, can the UEZ sell to redevelopment to develop it? I mean, that's what redevelopment does.
Wait. Do you partner with them?
We just heard an argument that we don't want to put money into developing a project, so why would redevelopment buy it if they're not going to put the money into redevelop the project?
And this is an investment for us. I mean, we're going to take a parking lot that's half gravel and half pavement and dump three and a half, four million dollars, three and a half million dollars into it, which in turn is going to change the value of the property, which you guys, City of Jeffersonville, is going to collect taxes on, a portion of there.
In addition, you have however many new residents that are supporting our businesses on Spring Street and all the other, enjoying all that investment that we've already put into our downtown.
Yeah, so you're going to have 22 new people that's going to live down there, you're going to have 9,000 square foot of commercial uses that's going to, restaurant, coffee, bank, whatever, just to kind of keep coming in downtown and, and join downtown and spend their money downtown. And, you know, I think in my mind, it's a, it's a win for the developer and a win for the city.
Well, I'm one of the members of the plan commission that voted against this when it came to the plan commission, because I didn't like the proposal. I didn't like the building and, and how much space it was taking up on that corner and everything. And that was the reason that I voted against it at the plan commission. And I'm, I'm going to be one of those that vote against it here.
Now return to my seat.
What's the resolution number?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President? I move we table this resolution until the next council meeting.
Second. Motion second to table this item until the next council meeting. Any discussion?
I won't vote to table it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, roll call vote please.
Aye.
Counselperson Payne.
Aye.
Counselperson Gill.
Nay.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Nay.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Samuel.
No.
Counselperson Ellis.
Nay.
Counsel vice, I mean, Counsel President Stoudamie.
No.
Five, five noes.
Yeah, motion, motion to table fails.
Motion to approve 2019 R4.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass 2019 R4.
Roll call vote please.
Any discussion? Any more discussion regarding this topic? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Payne.
Aye.
Counselperson Gill.
Nay.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Nay.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Samuel.
No.
Counselperson Ellis.
Nay.
Counsel President Stoudamie.
No.
Five noes.
Fails, five to, what, five to three? Next item, number 14, Ms. Medcalf.
I want to pass this round because it needs to be said.
Top 20 employees and top 40 vendors.
This is just for you to accept into the record.
Salute.
Every year, I just want to thank you for putting this together for us, and I know it takes a little bit of time to put it together, so thank you for your effort on this. Happy to see we have transparency in our local government.
Can you begin second?
No.
Paul second.
A motion and second to accept for the record. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Thank you, Ms. Medcalf. Ms. Medcalf, there, you're still up. Ordinance of additional appropriation.
Which one do you have first? The concession supplies. So this is for the Aquatic Center now, that they're going to be handling the concessions in-house, and they do receive revenues to cover for this additional.
That's pretty much what we do each year, correct?
Well, you haven't had concessions in a couple, and is it just one year?
Well, yeah, well, it was just last year we did.
Right, so it was not budgeted, thinking that we would still have a company.
So ordinance number?
21. I'll make a motion to approve the 2019 OR 21 on the first and second.
Paul second.
We have a motion and second to pass 2019 OR 21 on the first and second reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Passes. Next up, Ms. Medcalf, I know another ordinance of additional appropriation.
This is for the improvements to Bob Hedge Park that you all discussed at the last meeting, this is how you wish for me to advertise.
On this subject, quotes came back in, the Parks Department, Parks Authority met just before this meeting at 5:00. Quote was approved for total removal and replacement was $122,710. $13,000 of that, and some change was for the removal. Paul's going to try to see if we can do to maybe get that down where it needs to be. The authority approved that pending the approval of the funds. I make a motion to approve.
Paul second.
On the first and second?
Sure.
Yeah, we have a motion to pass 2019 OR 22 on second, first and second reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Wilder, attorney general.
Sure, hi. First, I want to thank you all for my mea culpa at the last meeting, so I attend my daughter's graduation from IG Southeast, but I thought it was something interesting to note, that, as I thought I got away from a Monday night Jeffersonville City Council meeting. There at the commencement was Bill Shrewsbury, who in my lifetime, Vicky's lifetime, being involved in government, was on the Jeffersonville City Council receiving an honorary doctorate degree. So I tried to stand up and check for something.
They said, "Sit down."
Yeah, I'm a doctor, so it's very, "Sit down."
Department heads, any department heads would like to speak? Yes, Assistant Chief DiR.
How are you all? Thank you all, received an email from Chief Hedrick about this year, earlier in the budget, we planned for six new hires, plus a, we have one retiree, so seven total, ten in our budget. We just wanted permission to start the process with next month, meeting with the mayor board to ask their, ask them to reach out to the seven new members, and that would be, I think it's the sixth, June the 6th is the meeting, so. Our goal is to have them in and online no later than September 1. That will give us half the number we need for the ladder truck at Station 4, so we will beef up the engine that we have there now with a couple of extra people until we can get the other six in, so that's a step in the right direction.
I'll make a motion for, to get approved the fire mayor commission to move forward with the hiring process.
Sir, we have a motion and second to go ahead and give approval to move forward with the hiring process. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Thank you all.
Public comment, there isn't any, it was already done, and council comments, Mr. White.
Thank you. Mr. Sam's, I want to apologize for that vote. I hope that ARC remains committed to that project. This project, this resolution did not have to be done until next year, until the project's done, and I'm confident that the next council will be more pro-business minded. Not sure that many of those who voted, well, I know that a number of those who want to know will not be here next year, so I apologize for that, and hopefully we will get this where it should be going next year. Nothing further. Just Payne.
Just want to give an update, so we had, I had met with Kim and her HR, and we've been offering some different professional development workshops for City of Jeff supervisors, managers. We had one scheduled this past week, but because there is so much going on with it being a big holiday weekend, we decided to reschedule it, so we're going to be looking at rescheduling that to early June, so I'll make sure I send the updated date to each of you if you'd like to attend, and also to any department heads or supervisors or managers that would like to attend as well. And then also Memorial Day weekend, everybody have a good holiday weekend coming up before our next council meeting, and lots of things happening. Thank you, Paul, I know this is a really tough time for you with everything going on and all the pools opening, so thanks for all that you do for our city in this busy time. That's it.
Mr. Maples is not here, and he's on vacation, he noticed, give us notice in advance, so I just want to let the public know that. Ms. Gill?
Welcome back, Kelly, and I say I want to recognize the former city councilperson, Zach Paines, in the audience, for the beloved husband. Of course, last week was the police appreciation, and we do appreciate all you all do. I hope you all had a good week, you were well-fed all week and all that, and also, as we all know, the explosion and Jeff Fire Department for your professionalism and, you had deals a lot, I think that explosion came in, and right after that, I think you all had, then that 24-hour, and right after, two more structure fires, I know there was one off a plain road, so we appreciate all JPD and JFD does, I really do. And Paul, while you're here, I've been getting the pictures, I think I sent you some of them. We have some broken equipment in Vising Park and then also Bob Hedge. Do you have budget for those repairs, because some of them seem pretty?
Yeah, the repair at Bob Hedge just happened last week, it was a slide, a piece had broken off, we went in and filled it, it's a temporary fix, but we filled it with an epoxy and sanded it smooth, so it doesn't have rough edges on it. And Vising Park, we've ordered the parts for, and we do have the money in the budget.
Okay, thank you so much. That's all I have for.
Lisa touched on it, the explosion that happened in Capitol Hills yesterday, it was a tragic event in Jeffersonville. I'm glad we have such professional, all of the people that took part, I attended a communication conference that the mayor had today and got to see firsthand the damage, and it was stunning. But walking through it, it's not just an explosion, I mean, that was somebody's life that has thrown on the streets, and it was very moving and powerful, and it really makes you be thankful for every minute that you got. And then also, it makes me thankful, I spoke with all the different agencies that were involved, police, fire, street department, other agencies that came, the state police, and it just sounds like everybody handled it as well as it could be handled, so I want to give a thanks to all those entities. I've had numerous contacts from the community about what they can do. People immediately wanted to step forward and like, how could they help, what's going to be done? And the answer today from the mayor was, you know, it's still in assessment, they still have to do engineer reports on some of the houses that were damaged, and if they're structurally repairable, so they're going to, all that information will be coming out soon. I don't have anything yet, I don't know if anybody does, because it's still kind of, we're still trying to wrap our minds around exactly what all happened. I believe there's some kind of report coming out tomorrow that will officially kind of clear up what the cause was, because there's still a lot of speculation in that regard. But it was rather moving and things like that, and if they don't, they should, make you appreciate every day, and that's it.
Mr. Allen?
Just echo the thanks to all of folks that responded, you know, to the neighborhood Sunday morning, police, fire, the building commission, everybody that came out and supported the neighborhood through that. Also, you know, we had, like Ms. Gill mentioned, JPD had some other instance right on top of it, or I'm sorry, JFD did, and JPD also has had a rough week as well, so just want to give shout out to you guys and say thanks for everything. That's all.
Mr. Ross?
I would like to just encourage everyone to remember what Memorial Day is about. You know, Memorial Day is about those that have gone on the force, those that have lost their lives in military conflict somewhere, and also we have to remember those, our officers, police and firemen, that have lost their lives in the line of duty here at home. Pray for them and bless them and bless their families, so I have.
Sam?
Just a comment. Homelessness has been an issue and continues to be an issue in Jeffersonville as long as I can remember. Approximately seven years ago, the mayor pulled together a task, a homeless task force, and since created a commission that was established that encompasses Southern Indiana, not just Jeffersonville. I don't feel it's government's role to be the service provider, especially when we have many other entities such as churches, nonprofits, et cetera, that can do work with the homeless more effectively and efficiently. But I do feel the government should support and influence in some way that ensures that services and needs are met in your community. I'd like to work with the council and propose that we establish a non-reverting fund, for lack of a better term, called Homeless Needs and Services Fund. And then, since homelessness impacts businesses and development, I'd like to, for us to discuss possibly utilizing 1% of edda dollars annually to go into that fund. That would wind up being approximately $26,000 based on this year's into the next year's. I'd like to put together, come together with council members and get your input on a more developed plan, but I wanted to kind of put that out so it doesn't just catch everybody totally off guard at a meeting where I put something out for us to vote on. But what I was thinking, some time back, Ms. Payne, that's nice to say, she, she worked on the, what I would call the giveaway dollars, kind of was thinking about that, and we talked about having it where people would come in and give a proposal. Well, part of this would be specifically where maybe twice a year, we would say, we're going to open it up, open it up for proposals, and four to six weeks after the proposals are given to the council, the council would have time to discuss it publicly, privately, whatever, and then would decide if one or more of those proposals do meet a need that we see, similar to how foundations work when they do proposals or accept grant proposals. It would, it would require, hopefully it would require that this must go to direct services. We put money into, last few years, kind of building, I'd say the administrative piece of it, and it's still being, it's still working, but, but after seven years, it's like we need to actually help the people that this was set up for. And so, again, I'd like to ask for those that would be interested in this, to give some consideration if they have some ideas or a plan beyond what I've just kind of generally put out there as potential framework. I think it could be very positive, and it can be a tangible step that actually meets the needs of the Jeffersonville's homeless folks. And again, any input is appreciated after this. So after this, if you want to communicate with me, email me, if you have a thought, and if your dad's set against it, it'd be good to know too, so.
Are you, are you suggesting this in addition to supporting the homeless coalition, or in replacing them?
This would be separate from whether the council at budget time chooses to move forward with the coalition, like it is now, or more, or whatever. It's separate, because it seems like, I realize at any point, we can, the council can put it in the budget if they so choose, but, but it seems like at budget time, you're so crunched looking at things, it's easy to leave something out. And if we put this in and set it in, we know that at least a small amount is earmarked for that ongoing, and if the council chooses in the future, they get to choose the projects. If they choose not to fund any of the projects, that's fine, then they could always do away with the fund. But it, it's a way to kind of make sure and draw attention to something that we all know is an issue, so.
Part of those discussions, I don't do, have any, like, meeting with you, or if you want to do work, whatever, but, because I do work with Clark County Cares, I do work with Keely, one of the homeless coalition, and setting up, she's really been setting up some good protocol, especially when I get notified of a camp, I'll notify her, and given the contacts of the Police Department, Acting Assistant Chief, and former, discussing that, so they, police officers, they call that, they have a protocol, and also working with Barbara Anderson, and I know, there is a little gap there, and as you remember, that one year, Broadway, we gave, I think it was showers, we donate money, and then we also, when they had a lot of white flags, they needed fuel and different things like that, so is that kind of what you're thinking, and the needs there, or?
Yeah, yes, and more, whatever. To me, if, there's a number of entities that are trying to get it, meeting the need, and it can be everything from sheltering them, to feeding them, to clothing, a lot of things. And if, I think if they were aware that there could be potentially some dollars available, then that would have them focus on a specific proposal, and then they could bring it up, and if we think it meets the needs, it could be voted on, if it, we don't, we don't accept it, and, but it, it earmarks a small amount of money, and because it's, I'm choosing to use initially, again, I'm open to ideas, but edit, because that's a growing fund, and has, as River Ridge continues to grow, but it, it directly affects businesses and development. If you're not, if you're not addressing it, and I would hope Jeffersonville can be more on the front edge of that than reactive all the time, so. I just, it just, for your information, that I want to- information, that I wanted to pass that out, let you know that I'll probably work, talking with our attorney about trying to put this into some form.
In terms of economic development, so, because I work with the homeless population Louisville in training, professional development, and the estimated economic impact of having one person on the street is about $49,000 in terms of an economic drain per person per year, so there's a significant economic development impact in helping to, helping this population to transition out of homelessness and whatever opportunities might be available to them, so.
That's it. This weekend was scholar weekend at Jeffersonville High School, and we all should be proud of the job that they do at Jeffersonville High School, there's a lot of quality, competent, smart, hard-working students, and you got to see some of the best and brightest this weekend, and I'd like to at least call out one person, and that's Mark Johnson, who got a direct admit to the Air Force Academy, so, I don't know, Mr. Hawkins, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, because you might have more insight, but I was impressed with the quality of the scholars, and it was a large, they said it was the largest group.
And this year as well, they had, there were over 100, I'll say 110, but there might be off by a couple of students who had a 4.0 GPA or above this year graduating Jeffersonville High School, which is an all-time record as well, a very strong class.
That's all I got. Back. Mr. Turner?
I'm ready.
Mr. Turner?